Good evening, welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of Somersville City Council on this fourteenth day, Valentine's Day, the year of our Lord 2022. I'd like to do, start off tonight by welcoming our guests, and I've got some special guests that I want to make a few comments about. We've got county commissioners Garrett Cole and Craig Chapman. Council, I just kind of want to highlight that it's a pleasure to have a couple of county commissioners here tonight. Not only that, you know, these guys are real forward-thinking, and it's a pleasure to work with them. And I have found here of late that we've been able to partner and do many projects and head the right direction in many different directions and things happening here in the community with county commission. And I do so appreciate that as I know the citizens because ultimately at the end of the day, that's who we all represent. So also, in our presence tonight, we have the OES director. John's been on the job about six months, is that right, John?
Yes, sir.
John McGinnis. John kind of highlighted his skills on Christmas Day with the tractor fire. You know, fortunately, it takes somebody to coordinate all the logistics. Sometimes it can be quite complicated coming from the many different directions. And although I was out of town, I was kept up to date regularly by not only the county commission, but my fire chief and others have had feet on the ground or boots on the ground, as they call it in the military. And so I several times made a point to recognize John for his leadership and the task they had at hand. And quite frankly, I think from the standpoint of an OES director and working with the many volunteers and state agencies, John, you did a wonderful job and we appreciate it. So, and I think that also is a good sign for Nicholas County and our future. Also present tonight, we've got senior director. Sure is good to see you again, Miranda, it's Miranda Weinberger. Miranda's the director and of course, like every organization in our city, we're all starting to put the pieces back together and we're gonna get doors open back up and go at it again full steam. So Miranda, it's a pleasure having you here tonight as well. So with that said, let's move into tonight's agenda. The first item being consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held on January 24th of 2022. We have a motion on the floor. The motion was to waive the reading, we have a first and a second. Are there any changes or amendments to those minutes as they were presented in your package, council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment, and I believe that the yeses are on the agenda, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Gary, okay. So we'll move right through it. So the next item I get to talk about is very proudly, through our delegate Heather Tully. The city of Somersville was awarded two local economic development assistance grants. Heather actually came to city hall a week ago from this past Friday, so it'd been a week ago Friday, and presented me with the cities. We got a $5,000 grant for our Webster Road sidewalk project. As a matter of fact, why we're talking about Webster Road sidewalk project, any of you have probably seen, the engineering has begun, so they're doing some staking and marking, and that's the engineering of that project. So we're excited to have that underway. And then, so Heather gave us $5,000 that actually comes through the office of the governor. These are local economic development assisted grants that are given out by delegates and senators. We got $5,000 for the sidewalk project and $5,000 for the recreational complex. So again, I want to thank Heather, delegate Tully, that delegate Heather Tully, I better say it right here. I want to thank her for thinking about the city of Somersville and let her know along with the office of the governor that we will put that money to good use. Then Heather also asked me if I would, on her behalf, present the senior center with their $1,000 local economic development assistant grant, which I'm gonna do right now. And Gary's gonna take a picture so we can click it off to Heather. So. Miranda, thanks for coming out tonight. And we'll just kind of do one of these deals here. Here, wait, let me take off my old man glasses. I forgot we're on TV. And you could always, you know, give a shout out to Heather and let her know you received it, you appreciate it, okay? Thanks, Miranda, thanks for coming out tonight. Okay, moving right along. The next item on the agenda, council, would be approval of the city of Somersville to join of membership to the New River Gorge Regional Development Authority. Counsel, I tell you, this to me is probably one of the best moves we can make. I am a big believer, being a long-term board member in the past of New River Gorge Regional Development Authority. Even a lot of the different grants, just about everything coming and going from a government standpoint, needs the approval and endorsement of our Economic Development Authority that is formed by statute, which includes Nicholas County, Fayette County, Somers County, and Raleigh County. And so all of those counties are members, which means from all of those counties, a county commissioner serves, and then of course, they each get to appoint two members. So also, the city of Beckley is a member, and to become a member, it's pretty simple. You request to be a member, and then you pay dues, and the dues is a dollar five per citizen. And so according to our 2020 census, I've got the numbers here somewhere. Always do this, too many papers. According to our 2020 census, we're prorated for the first quarter, I'll get to it, I promise it's here somehow. So our membership dues are gonna be $3,602.55 annually. And our first invoice will be due, prorated for February and March. For $450.32, we'll be billed $964 on the quarter thereafter. I can tell you that I'm excited about the opportunity to get back on the board and the city of Somersville have a seat at the table. And again, from the region, you know, even through economic development, from a state standpoint to the region, it all comes through that kind of channels. And even the grant application that's right here that we applied for with the EDA, of course, it needed the Regional Economic Development Authority approval even on this, and there's many other projects. So it's just, to me, having served on that board in the past for over a decade, I'm a believer in it, and I think it would be just an excellent move for us as a city to have a seat. And so the first thing I need you to do, and I will let you know that their meeting was supposed to be before our meeting tonight. Actually, I was gonna attend tonight as a guest, it was supposed to be at four o'clock. Craig Chapman is actually the county commissioner representative for Nicholas County. And then Elizabeth Dix and W.D. Smith are the appointed members by the county commission. So what it does is it gives Nicholas County four seated members on the board of directors. So tonight, they were supposed to have a meeting, it got canceled due to some illness and other reasons. So now it's bumped out to the 22nd. And so we still will not be actually approved by the board to be a member until that date, but we'll go ahead and approve. So when they approve us to join, then it's all official, we'll be members. So at this time, what I'd like to do is entertain a motion that the city of Somersville join membership to the New River Gorge Regional Development Authority.
May I approve?
We got a first and a second, is there any discussion and or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. Then the next item on the agenda is, council, I need this body to appoint me as the seated member of the New River Gorge Regional Development Authority. So I would entertain a motion to appoint Mayor Robert Schaefer to the New River Gorge Regional Development Authority Board as the city of Somersville's representative.
So moved.
So moved. First and the second, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. Thank you, council, and trust me, I will represent you with great interest. The next item on the agenda is the Mountain Transit Authority, MTA. Tim Thomas, their director, reached out to me. They are in the real near future coming to city hall to apply for an upgrade renovation to their premises. It's gonna be somewhere between the dollar amount of $750 and $1 million. And of course, they do not pay building permit fees because they're a government entity. And what Tim was calling for is to see if the city of Somersville could give them relief on the BNO. So in thinking about this, as you will so remember, council, approximately about a year ago, we visited this not once but twice. I will tell you, the interesting differences or the dynamics that are different between this situation and that situation is the other situation was a private for-profit entity, this is a government entity. But what I would recommend to you is that we did not establish a presence of reducing BNO for the private sector, that we don't do it for the government sector. And if we want to help MTA, we do it by means of a contribution to their project. And, you know, we can discuss that, which in essence, we could end up at the, you know, we could end up at the same place. You know, I don't know that what we want to do is, what we want to get into is, you know, starting to reduce the BNO tax as we kind of have had much discussion about. So what I would like to do is get it in the form of a motion and then open it up for discussion.
May I approve?
Got a first?
Second.
And a second, okay, now council, discussion?
Why would we give a government agency a break on BNO?
Yeah. And again, and let me tell you, my thought process isn't about, first of all, I don't think we should, okay? Second of all, I don't know at the end of the day if the people that bid it really give the break to the, you know, to the government entity. I mean, you know, they're gonna bid the job, and you know, is it really passed on? So I really think the best, the best thing would be to do is say no. And then again, us come in behind the fact, because let me tell you something. MTA, under the leadership of Tim Thomas, is a huge asset to this community. I'm a believer in it. Wayne, you sit on the board of directors, represents the city. You know, I know personally, a lot of people that rely on that travel. And so, and you know, I think it's good too that they're doing well enough that they call for, of course, again, I don't know where the funding stream's coming for the expansion, but again, Chuck, I don't know that we would because, you know, it's private contractors that are coming in to do the work that are for-profit contractors. Any other questions or comments?
Because of the agenda, was the motion to deny?
No, it was to approve, and we can vote it down. The motion would be to approve it, but what the vote would be then is you vote it down. But we got the motion on the table so we could discuss it. Any other questions or comments, anybody want to weigh in on it? Okay, so remember, when I call for the vote, if you vote yes, that would give them the 50%. If you vote no, it does not. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign?
No.
Okay, so the motion fails. And again, I kind of talked to Tim about this before tonight, so I'll reach back out to him and then we'll talk about maybe, you know, after it's all said and done, can we help him out some with a contribution? Okay, so the next item on the agenda is, council, would be the approval of the Somersville Emergency Waterline Replacement Critical Needs Project Resolution Number Two. And this is resolution number two and the final resolution. And basically what this is, is to pay Region Four Planning and Development $1,000, and this is the administrative fee, and I gotta tell you, we got a deal on this one because jumping through hoops and loops and all the paperwork that was done to pull that project off, which also brought to the table the $50,000 from the Infrastructure Council to assist us was excellent, and all of that administratively was handled through Region Four Planning and Development. So therefore, I'll entertain a motion to close this project out, paying the $1,000 administrative fee to Region Four Planning and Development.
Second.
We got a first and a second, any questions and or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. The next item on the agenda, council, is the resolution. And this resolution, we did pass before, but we kind of had to redo it. And basically, this resolution, if you read it, the authorization for the acceptance of funds in the amount of $2,844,913.79 from the U.S. Economic Development Agency for the reference project, and commit a 20% matching share of non-federal unencumbered and available funds in the amount of $711,228.45. I will tell you that initially, when we passed this before, we were looking at our contribution 20% was gonna be 600. We had some snags there at the end, and the project that we submitted was, total cost of the project was for $3,556,142.24, so about three and a half million dollars. And so therefore, our matching contribution will be $711,228. And I assure you, council, we have those funds in reserve for those matching 20% funds. So what I need is, this has already gone to the USDA, but what we're gonna do is update this resolution in this package. This will go out to the USDA tomorrow. So I need a motion for approval.
May I approve?
We have a first and a second, any questions and or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. Moving right along, recorder's report.
Thank you, mayor. Just want to give an update to the council. The 10-year comprehensive plan is on the tracks, okay? We've got it on the tracks now, it's rolling. Now we're just following all the state codes primarily right now. We are following the State Code 8A-3-6, which says you must have a, must have it advertised 30 days prior to a planning and zoning meeting. So right now, it's on the tracks. It was in this past week's newspaper, so we do have it on the third day plan. Now I just want to let the council know so that you can be prepared for when, sort of a timeline for you to be coming in at. Once that is done, we will have our meeting, which is slated for the 21st. But once that is done, on that particular night, if there's no snags or nothing holding it up, the Planning and Zoning Committee or Commission will be able to vote in favor that evening and send it on the tracks. Now when they do so, the 8A-3-7 kicks in, which says you have to advertise it again in the newspaper for 15 days prior to coming to you. So we will do that. Just also want the council to know that, you know, nothing, no hidden agendas here whatsoever. We are going to go ahead and send out a reminder ad for the planning and zoning one week prior. So we're sending, we sent one out already, and then one week prior, we'll send a reminder ad out, just as a reminder. So once that evening is done, I'll come back to you again and let you know, but you'll be on the clock for like 15 days after it has been advertised. So that is sort of where we are right now.
What's the date?
Public hearing, the 21st.
February?
March.
March 21st. Okay, now Gary, real quick, okay, so you all hold the public meeting, the planning and zoning.
And you too.
We have to hold one too?
Yes.
Okay. So you'll do yours on the 21st, and then, and then, and then I guess you all take action approving it.
We can.
So do you plan on doing it that night?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have 15 days to hold ours.
Yes.
Okay, so.
So you're looking at on March 21st, 15, well, you have to look at the advertisement of the ad.
Okay, so can we do it in conjunction with the council meeting like before? Huh?
Yes.
Okay, so I would say what we'll do, council, is if they kick it to us on the 21st, which is a Monday?
The paper will run on the 24th.
It's gotta be advertised.
Yes, for 15 days.
Oh, before we can hold the meeting?
Yes.
Oh my God, too many rules.
Sorry.
Okay, so then when can we have the meeting? How about, can we do it, so then, so do we have to hold it at 15 days?
15 business days.
What?
Yes, 15 business days, so you're looking at.
From the date it's advertised.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so tell me when, tell me when we have to hold the meeting.
Second meeting in April.
The second meeting in April? Okay, and that'll be in compliance with what we need to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Cool. And just to add to this, just so that you know and the council does, once you have it, you have, there's a couple stipulations there. Once you have it, you have, the council has 90 days to act or three consecutive meetings, okay? And what I mean by acting, you have to either adopt, reject, or amend.
So I would say, council, what we'll do is we'll hold a public meeting. Well, we'll see what happens at your public meeting first. Yeah, then we'll hold our public meeting, and obviously, if we have, have good feeling after your public meeting that there's not gonna be resistance, then we could probably do it the 18th and approve it at that meeting, or otherwise, we'd do it at the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay, okay. So the 18th, council, you can, you can mark your schedules too then. Gary, your meeting on the, on the 21st, is that 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay, and so ours will be to be determined, again, depending on how many people show up for your meeting.
Correct.
We might be able to go at 6:30 before our council meeting.
Correct, and I will zoom ours also.
Okay, good deal.
That's all I have.
Okay, good deal, council, mayor's report. Just a few things I want to cover with you real quick. I want to remind everybody, this is technically, if you're interested in getting in on the city of Somersville grants, city council grants, the deadline is Friday, February 25th. So technically, this is our last council meeting and our last opportunity to let folks know if you're interested in applying for the, this round of the city of Somersville council grants. They're due the 25th by close of business and or postmark by that date. Again, these grants are available for any nonprofit organization for projects or services within the Somersville city limits, or we say close proximity there too. So if you have any questions, I encourage you to call city hall, get ahold of Cookie, 304-872-1211 at extension 104. And then council, what we'll do is we'll get those organized, and then probably the next two meetings, we'll do as we always do, everybody will come in and give their presentation on their grants, and that'll be sometime after that. I think our budget's due to the state in March, so we'll get it all done before the March timeframe. This is kind of on the same schedule that we always operate on. The other thing I wanted to highlight, council, is I got called to an emergency meeting today down at Golly River PSD. I received this order at 11:59 AM today. It's an executive order from the Public Service Commission and enclosed as a petition to the commission to order a general investigation of the water supply to serve Mount Olive Correctional Complex and practices of the Golly River Public Service District. It was in a meeting today down at the Golly River PSD that included the prison, it wasn't the warden, it was the prison director of services and another gentleman that was somewhere in that kind of a billet, along with the Public Service Commission, Golly River PSD, and Canal Falls. And there are some real issues. And right now, it's in crisis mode, the prison's on conservative water mode, and things don't go well in the prison when they don't get their amenities. Interesting enough, I found out today that house 1,000 inmates and 400 employees. And right now, it's just kind of not a real good situation with, you know, shower schedules, laundry, kitchen, the whole nine yards. So I don't know what the solution's gonna be. What I did tell them is we've got the capacity to push some more water, but at doing so, it's gonna cost us more than what we get at the meter. Because what we're gonna have to do, because of the way they have to take it, because they've got some pressure valves issues down past Beach Glen, and some system issues that they need to take care of that also has an impact on how we can push them water. What we would have to do is work longer hours, overtime hours. And of course, I asked the Public Service Commission today, you know, who's gonna pick up that additional cost? We certainly want to be part of the solution. Obviously, there's gotta be a long-term solution. I inherently think this is a issue with public service districts. And I don't think that these are the only two, and actually, the Public Service Commission sat down there today and said there's issues on both ends. Incidentally, you know, it's just, it's a very complex, complicated issue, but the bottom line is, the prison was there today saying, you gotta get us water or we're gonna have a riot. That's just as simple as they put it. So I can tell you, we're at the table, the Public Service Commission has ordered an investigation. We're gonna, we're gonna contribute and participate, and today was the beginning of it. So we'll be doing all we can do, the only thing I have to do, and I told them today, we're in. You know, the last thing we want is that to happen down at the prison, but at the other, you know, at the, you know, I just told them straight up, you know, my responsibility as the administrator of our utility systems is, you know, the due diligence that we owe our customers. And so they can't be paying for issues that we got on down the road. And certainly, to pump them more water, we're gonna have to pump more hours than we do because of the way they have to take the volume to get it pushed down. So we'll work something out, but Public Service Commission let me know they don't have any funds. I said, well, the governor does. Let's figure out, you know, and really what they're doing, I mean, and I'm gonna tell you what I, we're gonna fight like there's no fight. They brought in West Virginia American Water, who now has made a proposal to do an emergency water line. Well, you know what that means. That's a water line that's installed where they start buying water, and then all that does is hurt, you know, hurt us. So we've got a, we've got a volume of water, it's, you know, it's sad to report. You know, it's apparent that Golly River Water, or Golly River PSD last month bought about 9 million gallons plus from Canal Falls, and they can only count for customer sales for about four and a half. And then on top of that, they bought another 4.2 million from us, and tomorrow I'll get the reports on the customer sales from that. So they're upside down. And, you know, it was reported today, as we were in the meeting, somebody walked to the door and said they found a leak that they're, that they're losing about 60 gallons a minute. I asked James to call back and check tonight to see if that leak's being fixed tonight. And again, you know, it's just, it's unfortunate, but by the design of these, first of all, you got a system that's under right now and got major issues, and there's only so much those folks can do. I mean, they can't work 24/7, and so that's the problem. You know, the prison was demanding today to know when they could come off of conserve water. And of course, they've been bouncing back and forth from conserve water to boil water, and that's even, that's even, that's even worse. He told me, I don't know, you know, the number he used, and you know, just for drinking water, they bought over 57,000 bottles of water in the last little bit. Says it's just a mess, and of course, you know, they're starting to hop and holler too because that kind of stuff is not in their budget either. So I want to let you know that we're gonna do everything we can, we want to be a player. And then the other thing we're gonna do is protect our investment because we need to sell that water. You know, again, once today, you know, actually, also, the Department of Health was there as well. And I stressed again, we've got a regional water plant, 13-floor story water plant. We only ran out three floors, we're pumping at about 34% of capacity. Learned today that Canal Falls is pumping 24 hours a day. So we can't send them some more water, we just gotta work it out. And the other thing of it is too, is we gotta make sure we get paid for it. Because to do it, we're gonna have to work some overtime hours. So we're gonna be a player, we're gonna try to. So we're going to be a player, we're going to try to figure out how to, short-term, fix the issue for Mount Olive, but that's what's caused this whole problem, is Mount Olive has got some real issues. So I just wanted to let you know, we are a part of and playing as a player in this investigation that was ordered by the Public Service Commission today to resolve the water issue for Mount Olive. The last thing I want to say, council, with the county commission here, we're getting ready to go into executive session, by the way. When we do, the county commission and the OES director will remain with us for the first issue we have to discuss in executive session, but I would also like to say, I've been in some conversation, Wayne brought it up to me, I said, you know, Wayne, I need to say something that, about this publicly, because I have been questioned. I have created some dialogue and had some dialogue with the county commission already about downtown parking, and are we, what are we going to do with that lot? Is it going to be a parking lot, or is there going to be something else with it? So we need to further our conversation and look at the big picture. The county's looking at some things, so we will further that conversation. I will tell you that I do owe Jennifer Little, the D.E.P., a callback. I intended to do it today until I got called down to that emergency meeting, because the D.E.P.'s wanting to partnership with us and make that a permanent parking lot, and, and one of those environmental-type deals, green spaces where we, you know, do, do, do a project like that. So, you know, not giving them a green light yet. Still, we need to work some more with the county commission, but ultimately, we need to make some decisions, because we do have, as we continue to further develop downtown, we do have parking issues. So I just kind of wanted to make that public statement. I'm glad you brought it up, Wayne, because I know people are saying, is that what you did, mayor, is you put in a gravel parking lot? No, it's not going to be a burnt gravel parking lot. We will, here in the near future, come to some conclusion with some, some due diligence and planning and figure out what we're going to do with that lot. So that concludes the mayor's comments. Any council comments? Oh, actually, one other thing I want to say, and I say this in a real excited way, and actually, I'm looking forward to getting out of council meeting tonight, because I'm going to post it, or have it posted on my Facebook, because, true confession, I don't run the mayor's Facebook, it's run for me. But last night, myself and Councilman Chuck Shaw went up to the armory and participated in a Super Bowl watch party with a group of about thirty Marines. And if you remember, I told you before, as part of this, thinking outside the box that the C.E.O., Nick Keller, has done, bringing training to West Virginia, those Marines have been on the Fola site for thirty days. They did winter training down there. And so it was interesting, Chuck and I got to meet them last night, great group of Marines. This is the, the last of them. A bunch of them, actually, they, the, the battalion commander and the captain and all had me over yesterday morning, called for me to come over and say, meet them before they left. The rest of them were supposed to pull out today. I don't know if they got out today, if they didn't, they were leaving tomorrow, but they had a first battalion, second Marines, and infantry unit that trained for the last thirty days down at the Fola campsite. So it's good to see our mountainous terrain being used for things like that, and I'm telling you, Chuck and I reaffirmed to them, to them Marines last night, you can't come to better love and military country than, than the great state of West Virginia, and especially right here in Somersville. So it was, we had a great time and, and got to meet a bunch of great guys from all over, serving from all over the United States. So set for fire, right, Chuck?
Absolutely.
There you go. So anyway, I just wanted to give them a shout out, and again, it's awesome to see that kind of stuff happening in our area. That concludes the mayor's report. Any council reports? Hearing none, I would ask that we move into executive session under authority of West Virginia Code six dash nine eight dash four for legal personnel or deliberative matters, matters not considered public record, matters related to construction, planning, commercial competition matters of the purchase, sale, lease of property, or the investment of public funds. I do ask for a motion. Have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We'll give about five minutes for chambers to clear out.